I'd like to call the meeting's order. Please stand for a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For the record, this is a public meeting of the Bayonne Board of Education. It is 7:36, the 27th day of February. We're convening in the Anna J. Herbert Meeting Room. The presiding officer is Joseph Broderick, President of the Bayonne Board of Education. Those in attendance include Dr. Michael Wonko, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Kenneth Kotad, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, Dr. Gary Mader, Board Secretary, Mr. Thomas Fugu Jr., Acting School Business Administrator, Dr. Dennis Deignan, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and Mitchell Pescual Esquire, our Board Counsel. Meeting's open to the public. I will take a roll call. Trustee Alonzo, Trustee Casillas, Trustee Cruden, Trustee Finerty, Trustee Munoz, Trustee Ryan, Trustee Bellato, Vice President Wilbeck, President Broderick.
Here. For the record, adequate written advance notice of at least 48 hours, given the time, date, and location of this meeting with the agenda was provided as follows. Notice was prominently posted in City Hall at 6:30 Avenue C on the bulletin board reserved for such announcements of the Board of Education. The Board Secretary sent such notice to the Jersey Journal and the Bayonne Community News. Notice was filed with the Municipal Clerk of the City of Bayonne, Mr. Robert F. Sloan.
Okay, we'll start with our agenda. Approval of minutes, acceptance of communications. I'd like to remind everyone in the public, all our communications and resolutions are on the bulletin board and were posted to our website. Do I have a motion on approval of minutes and acceptance of communications?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
On that move, and second, Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Trustee Casillas.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Bellato.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Next up, we have a list of commendations, which I would like to leave into the record. Whereas head coach Patricia Longo has brought honor and distinction to the Bayonne High School and the community by being named the 2018 HCIAL Girls Volleyball Coach of the Year as head coach of the Bayonne High School Girls Volleyball Team. Whereas honors were bestowed on the Bayonne High School Girls Volleyball Team in the way of 2018 HCIAL First Team Selection Jessie Semiac, outside hitter, with an honorable mention going to Caitlin O'Donnell. Whereas head coach Patricia Longo has, along with her team, brought honor and distinction to Bayonne High School and the community during her illustrious tenure as head coach of Bayonne High School Girls Volleyball Team for the past 34 years. Whereas head coach Patricia Longo has guided the Bayonne High School Girls Volleyball Team this fall 2018 season with her all-around commitment to hard work, dedication, and determination. Be it resolved that this Board of Education wishes its heartfelt congratulations to head coach volleyball, head girls volleyball coach Patricia Longo, along with assistant coaches Juliette Fedrick, Lindsay Gordon, and Alicia Parker, also Bayonne High School Senior Jessie Semiac, Bayonne High School Junior Caitlin O'Donnell, and the entire Bayonne High School 2018-2019 Girls Volleyball Team. This is by the Committee of the Whole. Could you please come up to the front?
a team in the big schools and all that, and you see, it's a program, because it's, every year, it's the same, and we know we're gonna have an excellent team. So, congratulations on the program, Coach Longo.
Next, whereas head coach Lisa Rivas has brought honor and distinction to Bayonne High School and the community as a whole by being named the 2018 HCIAL Girls Red Division Soccer Coach of the Year as head coach of Bayonne High School Girls Soccer Team. Whereas honors were bestowed on the Bayonne High School Girls Soccer Team in the way of 2018 HCIAL Girls Red Division Team Selections, Marianna Valencia Forward, Adriana Morales and Viviana Valencia Midfielders, Casey Becaro Defender, Madison Aurora Keeper, with an honorable mention going to Christina Hanna and Sidney Weber. Whereas head coach Lisa Rivas has guided the Bayonne High School Girls, soccer, I'm sorry, there's a typo on this, Bayonne Girls Soccer Team this fall 2018 with her all-around commitment to hard work, dedication, and determination. Be it resolved that this Board of Education wishes its heartfelt congratulations to the head girls soccer coach Lisa Rivas, as well as assistant coaches Nicolette Mariano and Cecilia Sabres, and the entire Bayonne High School 2018-2019 Girls Soccer Team.
Regarding soccer, there's an old expression, and it used to be like, those who can play, those who can't, coach. In the case of your coach, she was also a great player, so you have a great player and a great coach, so congratulations.
Whereas the Bayonne Girls, Bayonne High School Girls Tennis Team brought honor and distinction to Bayonne High School and the community by winning the 2018-19 Girls Tennis HCIAL County Championship Title. Whereas head coach Jessica Noagroski has brought honor and distinction to the Bayonne High School and community by being named the 2018 Girls Tennis All League Red Division Coach of the Year as head coach of Bayonne High School Girls Tennis Team. Where honors were bestowed on the 2018 Bayonne High School Girls Team in the way of 2018 HCIAL First Team Single Selection, Junior Satalia Ergue, First Team Doubles Junior Wankey Lee, and Sophomore Tasha Gupta, with an honorable mention going to Seniors Sabrina Nezak and Senior Michelle Alexi Naval. Whereas this Board of Education honors team members Christina Boyt, Ania Fox, Tasha Gupta, Caitlin Kershner, Wankey Lee, Juan Juan Lin, Amanda Morales, Michelle Alexi Naval, Sabrina Nezak, Andrea Sampson, Sidiala Ergue, Lexi Vasquez, and Angela Veeder. Whereas this Board of Education recognizes the head coach Jessica and assistant coach Anthony Altabelli have guided the Bayonne High School Girls Tennis Team during this fall 2018 season with all-around commitment to hard work, dedication, and determination. Be it resolved that this Board of Education wishes its heartfelt congratulations to the head coach and the entire Bayonne High School 2018-19 Girls Tennis Team, and this is by the Committee of the Whole. They did this without tennis courts.
Congratulations.
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 Coach, you got to hear the little.
Me too.
I'm sorry.
I'm sure it's something else.
I would've thought the best thing to do was to knock down the tennis courts. And the other thing was, probably, Coach, you know that I've gone probably to more tennis matches than any other sport that there is, but I didn't get there this year. So, I realized I was the bad luck, so congratulations. And one more thing, the girls are laughing so hard in the front row that I know Dr. Mader was having a little trouble with some names, I think.
And I do apologize if I did butcher your name, best I can. Before we go any further, I know how the students would just love to stay for the rest of the meeting, but I'm sure you have homework to do. If you would like to leave, we will not be offending you. You can leave now if you'd like. If not, you're stuck here for a while.
If I ever hold your peace.
By all means, do not, if you'd like to leave, that's okay. We know you have homework to do.
Congratulations again.
Congratulations, everybody.
Better go home and study, because they ain't paying for it.
I guess they're running red later, Capetella.
Important person.
Wow.
Oh.
Important.
Okay.
So, is this canceled to go back to being the important person?
There were two emergencies in the district, and we have three commendations that we'd like to do tonight in relations to that. I'll read them. Whereas on Friday, February 1st, 2019, Lincoln Community School had a flood due to a broken water main in the pool area, resulting in copious amounts of water entering the buildings and a complete loss of water pressure. Whereas the following staff members, in accordance with their area of expertise, moved all evening and weekend scheduled activities to the Phys Ed Community Ed Center at Bayonne High School and/or the New York Sports Club to resume practice schedules. Notified parents of changes to lessons and practices helped ensure the building was operational for Monday morning. Whereas the Board of Education wishes to recognize the following staff members for their hard work and guidance they provided during and after this unfortunate occurrence, which impacted the Lincoln Community School and the Bayonne Board of Education and the entire community. Dr. Karen Fiamanti, Jason Scudder, Laura Kangiano, Dr. Michael Pearson, Christopher Romano, Nicolette Mariano, Dan Ward, Ashley Danbeck, Joseph Sacala, Evan Wexler, Lisa Kohler, Tim Carey, Dana Lukowski, and Ryan Campbell. Be it hereby resolved that this Board of Education wishes its heartfelt thanks and appreciation for their outstanding efforts in addressing the major incident at Lincoln Community School by the Committee of the Whole. Whereas on Friday, February 1st, 2019, Lincoln Community School had a flood due to a broken water main in the pool area, resulting in copious amounts of water entering the building and a complete loss of water pressure. Whereas the following staff members, in accordance with their area of expertise, pumped out water, assisted with locating the break, repaired the break, backfilled the evacuation, ensured that the boilers had water for heat, and school had drinking water, and the building was operational for opening on Monday morning, which we think was pretty amazing. Whereas the Board of Education wishes to recognize the following staff members for their hard work and their guidance they provided during and after this unfortunate occurrence, which impacted the Lincoln Community School, the Bayonne Board of Ed, and the entire community. Michael Kubert, Brian Marafiotti, Christopher Burns, Vincent Caola, James Smith, Andrew McCabe, Keith Mikowski, Salvatore Spano, Natalia Verachuk, John Rickard, James Tarbit, Nina Diachuk, Joe Siano, and Neil Harrington. Be it hereby resolved, this Board of Education wishes its heartfelt thanks and appreciation for their outstanding efforts addressing this major incident at Lincoln Community School by the Committee of the Whole.
Congratulations.
Our final commendation, whereas on Saturday, February 2nd, 2019, the below-mentioned employees were called upon to render services to those families impacted by a major fire on Andrew Street. Whereas these employees assisted the Red Cross Local Department to establish a shelter in the Phys Ed Community Education Center at Bayonne High School, assessed the needs of the shelter while maintaining constant contact with administration and security. Whereas those individuals were instrumental in securing food, water, drinks, toiletries, and necessary items for citizens displaced by the fire, and also remained behind to make sure the building was clean and properly closed by our custodial staff. Whereas the Board of Education wishes to recognize these staff for their expertise and hard work. Karen Fiamanti, Director of Community Education, Evan Wexler, Phys Education Community Education Supervisor, Jason Scudder, Administrator in Charge, and Marisol Diaz, Security Guard. Be it hereby resolved that this Board of Education wishes its heartfelt thanks and appreciation for their outstanding efforts in providing a calm, safe, and secure place for our displaced citizens during this crisis, and that's by the Committee of the Whole. Moving along with our agenda, consent, Section A, which is our curriculum, instruction, policy, resolutions A1 through A36. A1 through A36. Do I have a motion?
Not motion.
And a second.
A second.
Before we take a vote on that motion, I have one question from the audience. Melissa Godsky Rodriguez, 178 Avenue F, has a question on Resolution A30.
Melissa Godsky Rodriguez, 178 Avenue F. So, first of all, I'm not in any way, shape, or form against this, by no means. I have a family member and friends, I've lost six this past year to opioid abuse.
Melissa, I can't hear you clearly.
Sure. This is regarding the opioid policy. I'm not against this in any way, shape, or form. I've lost six people that have been my age in the past year. But just some questions around the cost. I was reading through the policy, I don't see that, and not that it should matter, but I think it's just very informational as far as when we're gonna be issuing that, like, who's gonna, who is the state paying for that, or we as a district will be paying for that?
I didn't understand your question, sorry.
The cost of the Narcan? How will that be covered?
You'll have to share one of yours.
Yeah, I got it. To answer your question, will you pay your mandate by the state?
Of course. All right, thank you. And then just to add, just some concerns, I mean, you know, it's gonna be covered grades through nine through 12. A few discussions have come up when the policy was released, just around, we are gonna have this readily available, and I know there's a difference between EpiPens and Narcan, significant difference. Are the schools and maybe, I don't know, as a district, I know it's state mandated, are we going to be looking into making EpiPens also readily available for children potentially go into anaphylactic shock? Are they readily available on staff members as Narcan will be?
The EpiPens are provided by the parent's central office. The EpiPens are in the nurse's office. The Narcan is also going to be in the nurse's office. The training will also have it at the high school. We are going to give training to all teachers. We're looking at the feasibility of that and the legalities of that for recognizing and then making it available. But the location would basically be the nurse's office.
Okay, then someone answers my question. I just want a clarification for you both. Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. I have a motion and second, on that motion, and second, Trustee Casillas.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Bellato.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Next up is our Finance Building and Grounds Resolutions D1 through B7. Once again, I remind everybody, our resolutions are on the bulletin board. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
And a second?
I second.
On that motion and second, Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Is the Knight Street property resolution on here?
No.
Oh. All right, then yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Bellato.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Trustee Casillas.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick. Next up is our Personnel, Resolution C1 through C19. I just have to make an addition that Resolution C8 is being tabled. Resolution C18 is being moved to non-consent. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Finerty. So, on a motion and a second, Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Bellato.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Trustee Casillas.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
That'll take us to our non-consent agenda. Resolution D1, where it's necessary for the Bayonne Board of Education to hold special board meetings. Be it resolved that the Board of Education will hold a special public meeting session to address the ongoing CSA Chief School Administrator Search held Thursday, March 14th, 2019, with a public meeting at 6:00 PM in the Board of Education Anna J. Herbert Meeting Room, in which the public may attend and participate. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education will hold a special public meeting session to address the ongoing CSA Chief School Administrator Search held Wednesday, April 17th, 2019, with a public meeting at 6:00 PM in the Board of Education Anna J. Herbert Meeting Room, in which the public may attend and participate. Closed session will be held after this session in the Board of Education Conference Room in order to discuss any of the following official action may be taken by the Board, but only in emergent situations at the workshop meetings. Could be personnel items in regard to our school year budget, and there's a list of other items that are, all budget items, terms and conditions of bargaining agreements, pending or anticipated litigation, any matters falling within attorney-client privilege, any matters involving employment, appointment, termination, terms and condition of employment, and any matters exempted by law. Be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Board is hereby directed to cause notice for a public hearing to be published in at least the Jersey Journal, not less than four days prior to the dates fixed for the public meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
On that motion and second, Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Bellato.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Trustee Casillas.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Whereas this Board of Education has received the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAPRA, and the Auditor's Management Report on the Financial Findings, Compliance, and Performance for the year ending June 30th, 2018. As part of that report, there are six recommendations for the general fund and the financial findings, each of which are new findings for this fiscal year. There are no repeat findings. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and the Auditor's Management Report are accepted. Be it further resolved that this Board of Education directs the Acting School Business Administrator to complete the corrective action plan to be reviewed and approved. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
And a second?
I'll second.
So, I have a motion and a second on Resolution D2. Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Bellato.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
I just want to thank the business office and the staff for all their amazing work. I vote yes.
Trustee Casillas.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick. Next up, Resolution D3, it is not on your agenda. I will read it into the record. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education advertised on December 19th, 2018, to be opened on January 15th, 2019, a bid to sell a lot, West 9th Street, Block 277, Lot 33, known as the property, which is currently owned by the district and was determined by the Board of Education, the Board, to no longer be suitable or convenient for use for which it was acquired and is no longer needed for school purposes. Whereas the Board has examined such bid proposals. The bid opening was Tuesday, January 15th, at 1:00 PM. The bidder named Deconstruction Company, 25 East 24th Street, put in a bid amount of $160,000. Whereas the Board has reconsidered its determination to sell the property, whereas the Board... Whereas the Board has reconsidered its determination to sell the property, whereas the Board has determined it is in the best interest of the Board and the public that it serves not to sell the property at this time and consider alternative, suitable uses for the property for the benefit of the district. Therefore be it resolved that the Deconstruction Company, as for said bid, is hereby rejected. Be it further resolved that the Board President and Board Secretary sign on behalf of this Board Council, approve same to form. This resolution is effective immediately. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
And a second?
I second.
So I have a motion and second on Resolution D3. Trustee Velado.
No.
Trustee Alonso.
Yes.
Trustee Casias.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
No.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
No.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
And President Broderick.
Yes.
The resolution passes. If you would give me a minute, I have to turn to C18. Okay, Resolution C18 was taken off consent and moved to non-consent. Whereas Board of Education is authorized to appoint certificated employees upon the recommendation of the Chief School Administrator pursuant to NJSA 18A 27-4.1. Whereas a Board of Education may appoint a qualified individual to act in place of an employee during the employee's absence or disability pursuant to NJSA 18A 16-1.1. Whereas Patricia Zuback has been reassigned to Acting Principal of Midtown Community School, beginning November 26, 2018. Now therefore be it resolved by the Bayonne Board of Education as follows, that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, the Bayonne Board of Education hereby appoints Mary Jo Trusso Sabers as Interim Assistant Principal, assigned to Midtown Community School, beginning February 28, 2019, through June 30, 2019, at a salary of $500 per day for day's worth. Two, that a contract be executed between Mary Jo Trusso Sabers and the proper officers of the Board, as approved as to form by Council for the Board. And three, that the Superintendent or his designee is authorized to take such action necessary to execute the said contract. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second on Resolution C18. On that motion and second, Trustee Alonso.
No.
Trustee Casias.
No.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
And that passes. Mr. Broderick, that is all I have, but I do have some cards, and I'd like to call up our student representative first, because I know he's got homework to do. Arsh, you may take the podium.
Good evening, Board of Ed Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Wonko, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Lopez, and Dr. Degnan. My name is Arsh Banji, and as the Board of Ed Representative for the Student Government, I hope to inform you of the events the Student Council has participated in and plans to host for the month of February. On February 14, Valentine's Day, Student Council ran our annual Sweetheart Dance. With this event, we engaged with a group of students who normally would not be able to participate in Student Government functions. We had an opportunity to cater to the special needs students, who are part of the Project Independence Program at Bayonne High School. Prior to the event, we reached out to Project Independent teachers to learn more about what their students would enjoy, and we delivered handwritten Valentine notes to invite them to the Sweetheart Dance. Student Government members danced, colored, and laughed with Project Independent students during the event, allowing us to bond with these students who are normally not a part of Student Council functions. On Valentine's Day, we also hosted an event for Bayonne High School students called Valentine Scrims. With the Valentine Scrims, students had the ability to purchase a rose accompanied by a written note for another student. These roses were hand-delivered to students during homeroom on Valentine's Day and acted as a means so we could celebrate Valentine's Day as students. That's all for February, and thank you for your continued support of the Student Government and your time today.
Next up is Mr. Anthony D'Amico, 73 West 6th Street.
Anthony D'Amico, 73 West 6th Street. Real quick, going back on that, the EpiPen question and the Narcan, Trustee Cruden said that they've always had the EpiPens. As a parent for a daughter that has it and has to provide it, it's not something that the school generally provides. The parent provides to the nurse in case they have an emergency.
We have adult EpiPens and children's EpiPens in the nurse's health office for the last 33 years. We suggest that students that have a problem carry their own pen with them, but we do provide a pen. We keep them in every nurse's office just in case.
That's what I was going to ask for clarification. Now, on that D3 with the land, we pay property taxes on that land, or are we tax exempt for it?
Tax exempt.
Okay, so then that's fine. The other thing is, I saw on the correspondence last week, the Rare Disease Day, obviously that's tomorrow, because I have friends over in Howell, and they're doing a special throughout their school district for it and supporting it, but I don't see us having anything. I know it was brought up a couple of times, but I don't see anything for our school district doing it. Is there a reason?
It was on the agenda last month about the Rare Disease Day.
Mr. D'Amico, I was Principal of Lincoln Community School. I was in communication with Principal Mikowski. He did address this last year, and I did speak with him. He is, I believe, doing something for tomorrow. But I understand you would like something bigger, and would take your suggestion and, you know, going forward, would definitely look at that.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, just the definition alone, it's obviously a rare disease, so obviously it's not something that's brought out. So, I mean, great job for Lincoln for doing it.
We did look into that, and it's on February 28, because it had a rare number of days. So we did do research.
It works out.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D'Amico. Next up is Melissa Godsky Rodriguez, 178 Avenue F.
Melissa Godsky, 178 Avenue F. So just to follow up on the IEP meetings, Dr. Degnan, recently some have taken place and no dividers were put up, and some parents did express some concerns. So if you could just maybe take a look into seeing how we can get that executed for some of the parents dealing with HIPAA.
So I did address that. I did speak at the leadership meetings. I was informed that was going well. If there was an individual problem at some school, if you could email me, just let me know where it's happening, because I don't think it's everywhere. And maybe they assumed that their room was appropriate, and it wasn't. And also, did they communicate that to the principal? I think that was part of it, too. If they let the principal know they walked in, it could have been handled right there.
Thank you. I can do that. Thank you very much.
So we'll go to the principal first?
Yeah, I can do that.
Beautiful.
Thank you. And as far as Rare Disease Day, I brought ribbons, even though I felt that, to be quite honest, my communication was disregarded since the month of October regarding Rare Disease Day. So I had the Foundation of GlobalJeans.org send me ribbons to hand out to the Board of Education members, so that you can represent. And I do hope going forward, and I am very proud of Lincoln School, because they have about, if I am correct, 92 cases of rare kids in that school. And yes, no, no, they're not classified on IEPs.
They do not. I did judge it.
Okay, so they are not classified on their IEPs, nor do they make that information public. You can research that. Some facts, is that 5% of rare diseases, only 5%, only 5% do people feel like they're public. Only, so over 7,000 diseases are out there, okay? 50% are affected by children. No, not every children has it classified on their IEP, because it doesn't impact their educational setting. That doesn't mean they don't have it.
It's not that it wasn't in their IEP. I went to everything on nurse's office. I contacted the Foundation for Rare Diseases.
Sure.
It's not anywhere on their health records.
Okay.
We have 33 students in the entire district that admit to how they, we can't address their needs or meet their problems if we do not know that they have this disease.
I want to be clear that I'm not asking you to address their needs. I'm asking to acknowledge that they're here in our city and in our school system. We have educators who have rare diseases. That's all I'm saying. We talked a little bit earlier about the workshop that we were going to address an opioid crisis. We should do that. And there are children out there with just as many issues. I'm not asking you to address their educational needs. I'm asking you to spread awareness. Genetics, okay, is a huge topic in schools today. These kids are going to school for genetics. These kids are part of that. So it's all I'm asking for. So these are for you guys. It's not, it's not to make anything negative, just want us to be aware of the kids that are in our, in our district and slowly entering, day by day.
Melissa, and so that you know, you know, your, your letter did not go unnoticed. We did put it on our communications at our public meeting last month, and I'm sure, as Dr. Degnan said, with enough notice now, I'm sure we could go into something for next year. But I just wanted you to know that your letter did go into the official record.
I didn't see that, it's just I sent it back in October, and it was kind of, it happens. I get it. So just, I would just appreciate that, so would a lot of kids, students in your community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final card is Rich Treon, 75 West 38th Street.
Rich Treon, 75 West 38th Street. Retired teacher of 40 years, and I know I have a lot of people who have been in their seats. I'll be nice. I'm glad she had to argue with you like I have over the years, because I know I never won an argument with you. And that's a compliment. Last time we were here, I pulled my card, I didn't say anything. I've been observing board meetings for a while. Excuse me. I was hoping maybe that I was going to get to work with some of my friends since, I will say, Dr. Wonko and Mr. Broderick have been my friends for more than 30 years, 40 years, and it seems like their integrity is always questioned. I don't know how that could be. These are the two most honest men I've ever met in my life. Board members, I am here to say that as an elected board, you hit the ground running. You're stalled. I don't know where it went wrong, but you're stalled. All we see lately, we see letters to the editor, and we know the Jersey Journal, and I'm not knocking the guy, because he's here somewhere, is about five to six pages long. So when you see a letter to the editor, it sticks out. This one happens to be from January in the Community News from Mr. Hector Gomez, when he was upset he didn't get picked to be on the board. Then there's people upset, and I'm going to try to talk fast, because I was a track coach for 38 years, and I know my three minutes is running, that maybe positions were taken away. Some things aren't the way they thought it was going to be. So be it. You people are here as representing our children. You shouldn't be fighting up there. You shouldn't be on Facebook. Stop the baloney. Some people are yelling. Mr. Wilbeck, you should apologize. This one, this, this one, this. This gentleman here, he wanted you to apologize. Two meetings ago, he called them a piece of crap. Where does it end? We got to get together for the sake of our kids. Mr. Alonso, these are going to be yes or no questions. Did you ever work in a bank? As a loan originator?
There's really not a question and answer.
I can't do that? Well, that was to his benefit.
Not required to answer.
No, okay, that was for his benefit, just to say that he did have some kind of financial background. Ms. Finerty, great English teacher, I'm glad you corrected the fish right from the head. That goes back to the early Greeks supposedly with Erasmus, 1564, okay? I do some of my homework sometimes.
Mr. Treon, I apologize for cutting you short.
Okay.
But we're a little over three minutes.
Okay. Can I say one more thing?
If the President allows you.
One more thing.
Okay. The piece of land that we're in question about tonight, once again, we didn't sell it. What is the insurance that we're paying on that land, and why don't we sell it? Because we don't even own the front of it. Our easement to the land is not ours. Someone else owns that. We own the back part of the land. It's in a, it's in a piece of Bayonne that is not under development. You people were nickel and dime on a lot of things. You hired a company for $39,000 instead of $12,000. But this, you could raise $110,000 the last time, now you're saying no to $160,000. I don't get it. I'm sorry. I was here to be a nice criticizer. You guys started out doing great jobs. I really think you should, got to get back to it. All right? Go back in the room, shake hands, MF each other, and get on with it. Okay? Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
My motion.
Motion by Trustee Cruden, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Casias. On that motion and second to adjourn, Trustee Alonso.
Yes.
Trustee Casias.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
It is 8:25. The Board will not return. Trustee.